Mr. Louise, I just want to confirm that you are online. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we're ready.
Okay. It's four o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting in order here on October the 16th, 2024. This is our Lancaster County Council Committee of the whole meeting. We have Mr. Louise online. So, I'd like to welcome everyone here. And would you please rise and join Councilmember Brian Karns, his allegiance and our pledge of allegiance, followed by our invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have granted us. Thank you for safe travels here. Although we pray that you would guide us and direct us to this meeting. May we be cognizant of the work that we do affects so many people in our county. Give us wisdom and guidance to make the right decisions. Go before us as we go home and let us all get home safely, in the name of Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Amen. All right, let's move on down to our approval of our agenda to have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second from Ms. McGriff.
Mr. Chairman, I got an amendment to suggest, since we have some folks here from River Chase, and I don't know what they want to sit through this lengthy meeting, I'd like to move their item 6E forward.
Okay, so you would like to move item 6E up to A1 then. So we'll do that first. All right, we need to, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for the amendment from Ms. McGriff. We'll have to do a roll call vote.
Terry Graham.
Approved.
Charlene McGriff.
Approved.
Billy Mosteller.
Approved.
Jose Luis. Steve Harper.
Approved.
Brian Karns.
Approved.
We have unanimous approval of our amendment. Now we need to vote on our agenda as amended. Roll call, please.
Terry Graham.
Approved.
Charlene McGriff.
Approved.
Billy Mosteller.
Approved.
Jose Luis. Steve Harper.
Approved.
And Brian Karns.
Approved.
We have unanimous approval of our agenda as amended this afternoon. Let's move on down to our citizens' comments. Please bear in mind, this is not a period of dialogue with council or question and answer, period. This is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. I ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. David Bashri Bosher? I apologize.
I'm, and it's actually oddly pronounced, David. So I'm David Bosher. I'm at 4099 Persimmon Road in River Chase Estates. I'm primarily here to listen, but I had a couple of quick comments. Some of you know me, I'm also the board chair of the Van Wyck Fire District Fee Board. When I moved here about eight years ago, one of the first things we did, we moved from outside the county, and one of the first things I did when I bought in River Chase was I was interested in the impact fee and how it worked. At that time, it was already well above $6,000, even though they had just done the grand opening for the development. And I did a study of River Chase and three other developments, Treetops, and I can't remember the name of the other two that I did. But it was very clear from that study that very quickly, very soon, River Chase residents were going to be paying at least double the impact fee of any other development that I had heard of. And I've done, I've looked at a couple of others since then. So River Chase was and is paying a disproportionately high impact fee, and that's, you know, that's fine, it's a nice development. But I would like the council to take that into consideration as it thinks about what it may or may not do with impact fees moving forward, because River Chase has kind of put its share in. The other thing I would, I would ask is that, in consideration of the fire department, we now have the fee, the $90 rooftop fee, and as you guys have urged us, that is going to be going up. But we hired the first employee this year, and we can just fit that inside what we're getting from the rooftop fee. So if there's any way to use the impact fees to either, whether it's for equipment or other things, there's no way we're going to get to a second body, there's no way we're going to staff a second station without both a higher impact fee and any supplemental help we can get from, from the River Chase piece. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And anyone that is live streaming this meeting this afternoon, I apologize. We are having some technical difficulties, and the only camera that is available at this time is the one you're looking at, and the dios is not available. We have, next, Jennifer Sabatino? Am I close? I'm sorry. Okay. All right, thank you.
My, I'll just put this on here, sorry. My name is Jennifer Sabatino, a resident of River Chase Estates, 6070 Chimney Bluff Road. Good afternoon, county council members. I'm here before our council to address two important issues, one, a resident of River Chase, and two, a medical professional of pediatric trauma. The two issues are River Chase Estates' contracted firehouse and developer communication. As per the last Section 3 planning meeting in October 2023, the LGI representative mentioned LGI was ready to donate the land and monies accrued last year. Elaine Bowman, a resident of River Chase Estates, and I have learned through meetings with the county, and to date recently at the planning meeting, it seems to be a holdup at county council. From what we have learned in meetings, there has been no money budgeted or any plans discussed regarding the contracted firehouse over the last 16 years. In addition, there has been no monies budgeted from the 16 years of collective revenue from the county building fee per River Chase Estates residential dwelling currently at approximately $8,000 in a general fund. The Van Wyck Fire ordinance was voted in about three years ago, collecting $90 per rooftop. It took about three years to reach this year's budget of about approximately $258,000, which afforded one paid full-time firefighter at the Van Wyck Firehouse and a few extra monies for fixing current firehouse and equipment, and thank you for that. There are no reserve monies at all from the $90 rooftop for your contracted firehouse. As of last month, there's approximately $2 million in an LGI reserve count from the 1.2 million earmarked for the firehouse along with five acres of donated property. At this time, County Administrator Dennis Marcel, along with the fire director and Van Wyck fire chief, stated in the recent meeting, the firehouse can be built with $2 million in reserve count. With that being said, and the 250 certificate of occupancy irrelevant at this time, there is absolutely no reason for the monies and property to transfer before the 250 CO for the safety of our community and soon to be others nearby. The firehouse needs to get started and permitted before our contract ends soon, in 2028, just three years away, in addition to budgeting support and services. With that being said, the language was always there for the county council to act in our best interest regarding safety and general welfare for our community under the contract, under our county contract, under Section 3.03. We are happy to hear discussions are now, are now starting through our meetings. Thank you, County Administrator Dennis Marcel and Councilman Terry Graham, for listening and taking the time to understand our concerns. As of today, Terry Graham is proposing, moving forward, the $8,000 building fee per River Chase home be moved from county's general fund to a reserve account specifically for our firehouse to support equipment and other services. I, Elaine Bowman, and the River Chase community support his efforts and efforts of others to move discussions, planning, and budgeting efforts forward. Moving forward, there needs to be more financial support from our developers regarding public safety, infrastructure, schools, and continued efforts for more emergency services paid lines. My second thing to address is developer communication. I and the community are asking the county to put in place a contractual obligation for LGI to have regular scheduled quarterly meetings with River Chase Estates through the language in our contract under Section 3.03. Developer LGI, since the community started back in 28, has not communicated with our community. It took 16 years to build and sell Section 1. We still have Section 2 and 3 to complete and sell. Our contract ends in three years. Effective communication transparency not only builds trust, but shows they are committed to general, to the general welfare of our community, short term and long term. The best kind of developer is the one that puts communities' best interests first and seeks to involve homeowners in any way they can. It starts with communication. There are issues that are not being addressed in a timely manner by the new HOA CAMs. It takes weeks to get a response from them or no response at all. This has been their track record with other communities. Let's not forget our many years trying through our previous management company, Key Management, who at least had onsite presence two days a week. Personally, I had the Van Wyck fire chief ask for my assistance trying to reach CAMs for property contacts regarding safety protocol to close any emergency services in our development. Sadly, no contacts to this date. In closing, I, Elaine Bowman, and the River Chase community urge the county council to hold a public hearing to adopt a law slash amendment to our contract mandating quarterly meetings with the developer, River Chase Estates Board, for the overall welfare and safety of our community. We have learned that your county already has this in place. And just as a reminder, you know, safety for, for me is just in welfare. Communication has to start first, it's so important. And me being a nurse and working with children, it starts with communication. Thank you all for your time and support. Thank you, Terry Graham, and thank you, Dennis. Enjoy reading.
Thank you, ma'am. I think we had six electronic citizens' comments. Ms. Simpson.
Yes, sir. There are six electronic comments. You have a physical copy at your seats, and a physical copy will be attached to the minutes for the meeting. The first was from Bill Nelson in Lancaster regarding River Chase Estates and his support for the planned firehouse for the community. The second was from Jennifer Nelson of River Chase Estates. She wrote in regarding the community needs the promised firehouse, a second entrance and sidewalks. Third was from Suzanne Camilleri. She wrote in regarding that the River Chase community needed, oh, she wrote in regarding traffic concerns on Riverside Road, keeping trails and natural areas undisturbed in the new phases, and that they need communication between the developer and the HOA, and that they need their firehouse. The fourth one was from Stephen Wood of River Chase Estates, that he said the community needed the additional construction entrance, connecting trail system, a kayak launch, the contracted firehouse, and developer communication. The next was from Michael and Golden Berry of Lancaster regarding River Chase Estates, and that they're, they needed their contracted firehouse and quarterly meetings with the developer. And the last was from Elaine B. of Lancaster regarding River Chase Estates and their need for a firehouse and developer communication. And I do just want to say, if I missed anybody, I do apologize out in the community. We had some miscommunications between comments that were supposed to be for the planning commission meeting last night and this meeting today, so we did try to catch everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. We do have a lot on our agenda today, and I know everyone wants to get home as soon as possible, so let's, let's keep our discussion relevant and, and on point, and so we can get out of here. All right, we moved, we have, first off, we have our discussion regarding River Chase Development Fees. Mr. Marshdale.
Mr. Chairman and council members, in your agenda packet, we did include the development agreement. I'm going to put a summary in the agenda item there for everyone listening or watching. In 2008, the county entered into a 20-year development agreement with LGI Land LLC for their River Chase Estates development, which is a 1,981-acre development of single-family homes over three phases located off of Riverside Drive, town of, near the town of Van Wyck. We highlighted some of the sections in here for your discussion tonight, where it does highlight just some general provisions, 4.01, about the development of the property imposes certain burdens and costs on the county, including those for certain services and infrastructure improvements. Eventually, ad valorem taxes collected from the property may meet or exceed the burdens and costs placed upon the county, but certain initial costs and capital expenditures are required that are not to be funded by any, an increase in taxes paid by existing residents of the county. This was written again in 2008. But Section 4.02 outlines payment to Lancaster County whereby at the time of the application for a building permit, that each residential dwelling basically will pay a county $4,900 at that time, and then it escalates 3% a year based upon the Wall Street Journal information on interest rates. So, but it cannot exceed $9,000 for a building permit. Presently, those who are building today, they're paying $8,255.86. But from that, it does stipulate in Section 4.02 that the expenditure and use of the revenue from the payments required by this section is at the sole discretion of the county council. So all these fees, there have been 149 certificates of occupancy issued to date that has generated $1.3 million since the year 2000. And so all that has been deposited into the general fund over time and continues to be used for general fund revenue and purposes within the budget. Then to the fire station within the development agreement, the agreement is the developer will donate 5.077 acres on a stipulated track off of Riverside Drive at no cost to the county, and as is. As part of that, the developer will donate $1.2 million, honor before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the 250th dwelling in River Chase Estates. And then that donation of $1.2 million will escalate from the January 1, 2009, again based on 3% or the annual percentage of the Consumer Price Index. And so the fund should be used exclusively for the design of a fire station building on the land. In return, for the land and financial donation, the county agrees to commence construction on the station within 12 months of receipt of the developer donation. And it states that it has to include the word "River Chase" somewhere on the naming of the fire station. So as of last night, to make sure we're all on the same page, I had a conversation with the Regional Vice President for LGI Homes. They have not established any timeframe by which to turn over the land or pay the stipulated amount of money for the fire station. And his exact words to me, well, it depends upon how fast the development continues to move for the certificates of occupancy. So there is not a timeframe identified by the developer. He did say that they can have the deed and land ready to turn over, but they are not, they don't have a timeframe. He said it could be a year, just depends on when the rest of their development continues to move.
That was not stated in the development plan?
No, no, timeframe is the 250th dwelling. But I want to make sure you're hearing from the residents, the residents are saying they want the fire station now. And there has been some, I don't know where the full communication came from, but there's been some thought that the developer said they are ready to turn over the land and the money now. Based upon my conversation last night, they do not have a timeframe.
That was what, who was that?
Regional Vice President for LGI, Drew Reese, I think Drew, I'll give you that exact name from my log, but yes.
So how many houses are built now?
Well, there are building permits issued, but there are 149 certificates of occupancy issued to date.
We're looking at 51 more.
More than, 200?
250.
100, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. But the development agreement is a 20-year agreement, and we've got a little over three years left. How would that impact the 20 years if they're not ready to do it?
I'm not clear. And then we had a meeting last night with the planning commission about their Phase 3 as well, so some of this timing, how much can they get done in the next three years? And then you're right, what is their obligation if the agreement expires? So we can get some more legal review on that. But their intention with their meeting with the planning commission last night was to continue to develop all three phases. Does that mean we have an opportunity for the development agreement to be continued under new circumstances after 2028?
Well, we don't know that after 28, if they don't hit the 250, that they, that they're obligated to do the firehouse.
We need more clarity on that, correct, from legal review.
But the, the rooftop fee, now that they're paying us $8,000 and it's going in the general fund?
Correct.
But most dollar development agreements, they always go in some public safety fund, not into the general fund.
And I haven't done a review of all of our, I think the more recent ones, as we've flipped at.
Maybe some of our council members remember that happening. I mean, that, that, isn't that true?
Well, remember, this was done in 2008.
I know, but.
For all of us. I know, I came on in 2009, and I'm the most senior.
To his point, you're saying the more recent ones are dedicated.
I mean, they're all dedicated, and it, and it says in there that these funds can, are the sole discretion of the council. So this council could say, all right, we want to, we want to set this aside for public safety. And we can do that really easy. All we got to do is take a vote and vote on it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, I'd like to put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
The wish of council. Would the statement be to dedicate, the agenda item would be to dedicate River Chase building fees? I'm trying to make sure the agenda item.
Yeah, I know you are, you are, and I'm trying to think through it on my head, too, because I'm thinking that, that.
We can do it afterwards, but the gist of it is.
We might not have a, I might not have a clear idea where I want to put it, but I do know that it needs to go into a different fund than the general fund.
Got you.
This date forward?
Yes.
Or ever?
And.
Maybe what we started recently, but going back to 2008, I don't think we can.
No, I don't think that, that was, that wasn't the, we talked about it going forward because.
Forward.
Not retroactive.
I would like for Ms. Harden to.
And would you repeat the question? I've got three questions swimming in my head, I want to make sure I answer one.
My question was, the $8,000 that they're currently paying as a rooftop fee, and it's at the sole discretion of the council, therefore the council can vote to put that money wherever the council decides to put it.
Yes, sir, we, we've worked on this with finance staff in the, the last 12 months to make sure that the money was properly identified, properly set aside in its own account. We've been working on development agreements with the finance department for a while now to make sure that accountability is separated out of the development agreement, pot of money into each individual development agreement.
So, so you know what's in that development agreement in the last 12 months?
I don't have it in front of me, but.
But, but it has been set aside, is that, that's my question.
We can tell you what, we can tell you what was generated from the River Chase.
I know you can do that, but she's, but Ms. Harden's indicating it went into a different account, other than the general fund.
I'm, I'm sorry, it went into a development agreement account where all the development agreement funds were done, and any money expended from them had to have a line item that pertained to the particular development agreement. What we're doing now is we're separating them out, which is a better practice.
Instead of a combined, you.
Yeah.
We're trying to make it easier to report on what you need.
I think what I want, what, what the residents want is they want some kind of way of knowing that this, this $8,000 is helping their development and the community. Would, would this have to be done as an ordinance, or can it be done as a resolution? I think it involves.
Well, so if you want to do it from this point going forward, we would have to probably do it as a budget, a budget amendment, because we're moving them from different funds, so we can add that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like just to make it simple.
I would say, I think we might, it might have been done in the budget revisions at the end of last year. It might have already been set up.
Well, this specific one, we're, we're changing the U specific for River Chase. But to your point about, there are other development agreements, one of the more recent ones is where there is a stipulation for a public safety fund payment, and it is stipulated that it be put into a dedicated fund for non-recurring public safety purposes. That's how we've stipulated.
So in other words, it's for capital and not for operating cost.
Correct. And this is another development agreement where they also have a donation of land for a public safety.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I mean, I understood that was the way that most of them were done, they were done for capital expenses, not operating expenses.
So we can, we can phrase the agenda item that way for the next meeting, if that's the intent, is to use the River Chase funds for non-recurring public safety. We'll, we'll finalize that after.
Okay.
And sort of remind me again, Dennis, what did the, you say you talked to the Vice President of the company, and what did he say about getting back with you on this issue?
No, he said it depends on how their certificates of occupancies continue, because they're trying to do their Phase 3, I believe, of their development, so that will speed things up and add more homes to the development to get up to the 250.
So if we're slowly getting to 250, what will happen? But we understand, I understand, we fastly get there, we get there within a year, so fine. But what if we write on the cusp of that three-year?
And that's why I said we need to get a legal review if the development's not complete, but the DA ends in 2028.
Okay.
So we'll have more, more information for you on that.
Realistically, there's not going to be 250 houses by 2028, it's just, it's.
That's what.
It's just a market, and it's a.
I think that's the direction we need to talk, we need to say that in our discussion, Dennis.
Only, only comment I'd make on that, you know, they have done, they have gone through and the planning commission and got submitted stuff for, I believe, Section 2 and 3.
Right. And that was part of the conversation yesterday with the planning.
And that was about 500 houses or something, at least, I would think, for both of those.
Yeah, I think the planning commission's conversation yesterday was definitely for more than the 250. And so when they do Phases 2 and 3, the full build-out, but I don't know if they talked about a timeframe.
All right, there, there. Okay. One, one thing I hate to bust a bubble, but there's comments about council getting involved with the developer and forcing them to have meetings with the homeowners. I, I don't think that's legal. The council would have no opportunity to, or. I mean, I agree with you, except I've heard the comment that's in New York County, so I'd like somebody to research that and see whether that is true in New York County.
We'll research that.
We need, we need, we need to know whether that's a fact or not. Yeah, all right, we'll find out.
You said the development agreement ends in 2028?
Correct.
From the way I read this Section 4.02, a payment to the county, there is no stipulation of a timeframe here. It just says that they're going to pay this money at the point of when a building fee is, or a building permit's applied for, for each home.
250 houses.
For, you know, up to that 250 houses, it doesn't say that, you know, that's good through the 28th, it says they're going to do it whenever a building fee is, is called for for each residential dwelling unit to which the building permit would apply.
So they are, so they are paying the building fee per building, but you're talking about the contribution to 1.2.
It also talks about the contribution in that same paragraph.
I'm looking here.
And I'll see where there's a sunset date to it.
I got you. We will, like I said, we're going to have a legal give us more information about how they work in tandem with the expiration of the DA versus the commitment to the fire station.
So we'll have more information. We'll have that information.
As soon as we hope, maybe by Friday, but before.
But before we have a discussion on River Chase fees.
Yes, it'll be before the next agenda item is brought forward to council.
Mr. Graham, any other information you want researched?
No.
Okay. All right, let's move on down to, Mr. Louise, any comments? Mr. Louise?
Okay, I was just, I want to make sure we didn't leave you out. Okay, all right. Let's, let's go on down to our detention center update for Mr. Marshstall and Mr. Catledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll have Mr. Chatledge come forward from Perception Builders, who is helping to manage our project for the detention center with the sheriff's office. He has an update for you and a slide presentation that we'll pull up on the screen if we can. Ms. Simpson? Will that work? The slide presentation?
Yeah.
We'll ask Mr. Chad Catledge to take it away.
Thank you again. Appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, and members of council to address you once again. This will be our first update since October of 2023. So it's been just right at one year since the last time we spoke. Time does fly. We'll give you a quick overview of what's happened since then. At our last meeting and update, we shared with you design development drawings for the detention center, and we shared with you a project budget. At that meeting, the project budget was ratified, and we have your approval on our design development drawings to move forward to construction drawings. So over that time, construction drawings were developed, subcontractor bids and all of our bidding process took place, building plan review, site plan review had been taken care of. We've got our site grading permit is issued. We've just got a few ancillary approvals to continue to work through. So we've been working diligently over the last year. We'll go through now, and let me just do a quick reminder, if you want to see the screen just of the overall project and kind of refresh your minds. This is our overall site. It's a 65-acre site on Highway Nine. You'll see the detention center there facing Highway Nine, and to the west is our existing sheriff's office. There's an existing, about a four, five acre pond on the property that stays intact. And then we've got future property that could be developed by the county at some later date on the southern exposure there. Little bit of a closer view of the detention center and how it connects with the sheriff's office and Highway Nine across the north side of the page there. So as a quick update on our, on our budget, back in, I'll kind of bounce around a slide a minute. So in October 10th of last year, we presented a total project budget of $90 million. The good news is I'm presenting to you a budget at CD level of $90 million. Construction GMP will be just over $75 million, and all the projects off cost, land acquisition and whatnot, around $14.5 million. Now, this was not an easy task. We, I will tell you, in, after our bidding process in August of this year, we were about $2.5 million over budget. So during that time, our team went to work and developed a list of VE items, value engineering items, 124 to be exact, which totaled $4.5 million in opportunity to save. We went through with our team and the sheriff's department and the detention center staff and evaluated each one of those, and we accepted 29 of the 124 with a value of $2.4 million. So puts us back in the $90 million budget range. We do have about $600,000 in VE we're still evaluating and could potentially take advantage of. The greatest news about all that VE is we didn't lose any program. Not one piece of programming was lost. So every, everything that the detention center captain and the sheriff desired for this project is still in the project. We just found better ways and more efficient ways of getting it done. So we're excited.
Could you give us an idea of what some of the, some of them are? Do you have those notes or?
I've got 124 of them, matter of fact, but I'll give you a couple of highlights. A couple of the big ones. For instance, VE number 93 was an alternate design detail for exercise yard mesh ceiling. That line alone was $443,000. Under that, another large one was for piping below nine feet. We went from a, to a PVC pipe as opposed to a higher grade pipe, but being nine feet deep, the danger of causing damage to it was, was much less. And so that was another $487,000. And we can go all the way down even to, we have, let's see here, changed vendors on a couple of items, you know, those are the $5,000, $18,000 line items. Those are just a few, but nothing was left unturned. These items list anywhere from $5,000 to almost $500,000.
Was your grading cost, did it meet budget or was it over budget?
I think, let me, let me evaluate that here. So our, our grading cost at design development was about, let's just say, $3.8 million, and we ended up at almost $4.9 million. So we almost had a million dollars, a little over a million dollars in escalation and grading.
Okay.
Yes.
And actually, if you put that in context, so would you say it's almost $5 million for site grading and prep?
Total site development, so.
Site development. If you put that in context, we said the detention center site is 64 acres, 65 acres?
We're.
With the pond.
The grading, probably less than 10 acres.
Okay. So yeah, I know where we're thinking about how grading is.
I was thinking about for a different topic.
Yep. I know that'll be coming up next, so I'm trying to put it in the context of the 65 acres with the pond and other things. Thank you.
But I guess my point, but one of my point was it was kind of what you expected. It went way over. Is that correct?
We expected some escalation, and so we had it anticipated in our DD development budget. And so we were able to kind of, we didn't know where the escalation dollars were going to go, and now we do, so.
You knew they were coming.
We knew it was coming. Sorry, this slide's a little small. Just as an update, I mentioned our total GMP for the project will be just over $75 million. To date, amendment number one to the contract with Ajax Building Company was $23 million. We did that last October, shortly after our meeting, which put detention center equipment, a lot of long lead items, our sales, our prefabricated sales, and our security electronics, put all those things in the contract. We could get those things going. Amendment number two happened just a few weeks ago, where we put site work and that site development and general conditions costs into the contract. So as of last week, we actually had a pre-construction meeting with all of our county department heads that needed to participate, and we anticipate site clearing to begin in about two weeks. And we'll look at the schedule in just a minute. By the end of this month, amendment number three, we're just dotting some i's and crossing some t's, which will be just over $41 million, will complete our contract for construction. Schedule, so you can see October 24, right where we are. All of our bid and our GMP is, is complete. Construction begins within about two weeks. It's a two-year construction period and then some staff training, so we hope to turn that building over and let it be occupied by the end of December, end of 2026. I think that's all of our slides. Any questions?
I love the comment on budget. I like that comment. I guess right now I'm just waiting to, waiting to see what happens.
Okay.
And don't go over budget.
All right. Good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I check in with county council? Is there another date? You want another update? Do you want an update in three months, six months?
When's groundbreaking?
November.
I mean, when new council comes in sometime in the spring or we'll do the groundbreaking and I think.
Okay.
Maybe we get.
Can I add to that? I like the fact that we're, we got to get reports, but I think it needs to be consistently quarterly, just to be updated in the, whether, nothing happens, I think we still need to know that. But to wait till the spring might be too long, Steve.
If you don't mind, once we've started construction, which is essentially this month, when we did the courthouse, it was convenient to come once a month, and maybe to this meeting when you have it once a month and give you a quick update.
Hey, that sounds good to me.
Yeah.
But we are looking, we need to check your calendars for, I believe it's November 5th, so coming up here, not 5th, that's election day, coming up here in November to do a groundbreaking event. Because as he said, they're ready to start turning some dirt. So we'll work on your calendars.
Just to make sure it's not raining.
Can guarantee it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Louise. All right. Let's move on down to our regional park update. Ms. Stephanie Snow.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of council. So just giving you an outline, I'm going to give you, walk you through the timeline of due diligence, also our recommended core amenities or elements, cost escalation factors, next steps, and then any questions. Also want to note that Chris Cloud, our Parks and Recreation Director and part of the project management team is here. Should you have any questions for him, as well as the Wolfport team, which includes Mr. Andrew Pack, who's the principal, he's been here from the very beginning with the master planning process and has some of that history. And then David Welling, who's been the numbers person and project manager and architect. He's been managing the costs. So I'll walk you through it. So last month, you had questions about due diligence and timelines, and I won't go through every single one of them, but just wanted to let you know that staff has looked and found documentation going back to 2019. One of the things that I would like to point out is on March 30th, 2020, the completion date for the geotech. So there was subservice exploration of the site, which is significantly unbalanced. It's a, it's a very hilly, unbalanced site. The Keckenwood report was very solid and, and formed the basis of the civil and site work estimations that Wolfport has come up with. So unless you have questions about this, I'll move on, but if you have any other, but as you can see, the.
Did we get a copy of that?
Yes, there's a, I'll definitely make sure you have a copy that looks like this, but attached to your.
But I mean, about the preliminary subservice, is there a copy of the report?
Yes, I will certainly get your copy of that. But in, okay. And in speaking with one of their engineers who attended one of the meetings, he said it was a very solid report. So I'll make sure that you all get a copy of that.
What do you mean solid?
I mean that it was a very good exploration. So it wasn't, it was, it was, it was, it was, it was a, see, I think you're picking on me. Listen, y'all chewed me out so bad last time, I have to be very serious right now.
You looked pretty good for being chewed out last time.
You haven't seen the back of me. So, all right, any other questions? Okay. So the regional park budget, Ms. McGriff said she likes in, in, she likes things being within budget. So when last we met, on September 14th, and looking at all of the elements, the cost, the budget was about $42.2 million. And so going back, and Wolfport has looked at these about 15 times and revised the numbers, what we're getting, going to present today is within budget at $34.5 million and just giving you what we can essentially get, which are a lot of the core elements to the park. So in looking at the site, what we're looking at is the core elements is the baseball complex. And so that would be three full fields, batting cages and bullpens, and concessions, the RRR building, and coach's room. The soccer complex, which would include the community room, three full fields, concessions, and event space, as well as a mandatory maintenance building, which would be fenced with one bathroom, one office, a shop floor with extended roof, and an enhanced splash pad restroom building and covered shelter. One of the things that I would like to notate is that instead of four fields, it would be three, three full fields as well as a soccer complex. This was the compromise. And then the sub elements, which depending on bid day, we may be able to do, but right now are not part of the core elements, would be the inclusive playground, the court complex, the small amphitheater and shelters, the T-ball, Miracle Large Field, and, and nature trails. Now, there are, there is a trail that would be around the baseball complex, but the trails, the enhanced trails along with, with bridges would not be included. So just walking through this $34.5 million budget, and then also want you to also note that this does include cost escalations for FY '25 and FY '26. So these are what we think when we actually get ready to go out to bid next year, that these are, these are solid prices. And if you have any questions, I'm sure that Mr. Welling will answer those. But anyway, we're looking at site infrastructure, site prep at $16.2 million, and there are some assumptions being made. We will have to work with Development Services and Ms. Harden to reduce parking. We estimated that due to the topography of the site, parking, parking spaces are about $5,000 apiece. Baseball complex, $3.6 million, soccer complex, two, a little over $2 million, the maintenance building, $748,500, the enhanced splash pad, we heard you, you were not very impressed with the splash pads I've been bringing you, so we're looking at doing a more enhanced one. I know you want dinosaurs and all that other stuff, so. And then design contingency is about $4.6 million, which I believe is about 8%, but again, we can get clarification, so. And then one thing to note, this is looking at staff actually bidding out projects internally rather than having the GC do it and do the markup. And so that would include tree mitigation, our UDO calls for us to actually, I believe, plant when we take down a tree of 24 circumference or more, what we call a legacy tree, I think that's what it's called, that we have to replace. So we have to actually take into consideration that synthetic turf, the splash pad or spray ground, benches, trash cans, things like this, we will, we will do internally and also IT. And then, again, soft costs, including third-party inspections, testing, permitting, and engineering, about $2.1 million. So we believe confidently that with the elements that we've shown you, that we would be able to come in and budget. And just, I'm sorry.
There you go. Would you go back a couple of slides to the, go on back, go back one more with the, okay, then go to the next one.
Forward or?
That, whoa, whoa, go back one. All right. The, the sub elements, that these are not included in this price right here.
Absolutely.
But if, I know we have eight million program from hospitality tax. Before we get too far in this thing, and I guess when the new council comes on in January, I would, I would like that to be looked at if, you know, I know we don't want to go over, but if there's two million more there or whatever, we may be able to, you know, it'd be great to have inclusive playground and, you know, like a Miracle T-ball and kind of give us a cost and a revenue without, without tapping anything else.
Chairman, the inclusive playground is about $801,000 or $802,000.
So we got cost on them?
Yes, we have, we have been, we have been having nightmares about these costs. So we've sat with the, we've sat with these costs, but one of the things is, is that what we were trying to do is reduce the, we were trying, we've been trying to reduce the budget, but keep in mind. But keep in mind, what we've been trying to do is get direction from council on the core elements, and if we have a good bid day, we may be able to actually include some of the sub-elements. But also, once we know what direction we could go into, we can also look at sponsorship opportunities that could help with some of these sub-elements.
You don't have to make those decisions anytime soon. So like where, where the Miracle Field will go, where the T-ball field and the court complex, these will be graded then. They'll be rough graded site, okay.
Yes, sir.
I like the fact that we've got sub-elements and we've got a cost attached to each, but also I think if we're ever in a position that we need to prioritize what we would want, if we have monies anywhere to do it, whether that playground would be a number one, the amphitheater, whatever, if we had the cost, then we could look at how we're going to build if we choose to. Also, Stephanie, you said something about the parking spaces. Could you repeat that again?
Yes, this, this cost is making assumptions that we won't have 1,200 parking spaces because we've reduced the elements. And so we will have to go to the TRC and work with Ms. Williams and Ms. Harden and the TRC to kind of look at that.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, and I also want to note that the community room stays as well, and the welcome center. So I'll just walk through this very briefly.
Spaces are shown there, do you know? Is that the 1,200 that's shown on the drawing there?
It's not the 1,200 because it's, we're making assumptions. So we're thinking anywhere between 800 to 750 to 700. But again, that, that's something that's going to have to actually be, be looked at.
And that's, that's still on the high side compared to some of the numbers that have been presented by Wolfert from other jurisdictions for a similar sized park.
Well, to keep in mind, the site is not balanced at all. There's a lot of dirt that has to be, be moved, and it's the, it's the, the site prep.
But we've also got to keep in mind that our parking regulations may be different than the other jurisdictions on the amount of parking space per square foot. So yes, Wolfert has shown us other developments with less parking, which is within those jurisdictions' guidelines. But it does seem to meet the needs of the facility to that point that we may have to re-look at our requirements.
Maybe we ought to review our requirements.
Yeah, I would, I would really like to look at it because, you know, the rec department said they're not going to be programming six fields at one time. And if it's something that the rec department feels comfortable with, can the county, can we apply for variance on our, on our own rules?
Ms. Harden has some information on flexibility.
So, so I can speak this for the record. I have spoken with Ms. Snowden and with Mr. Clouden and Mr. Marstall about how we are very much open to evaluating our ratio of parking for park spaces in relation to other communities and how they do it. The couple of things that we, at the beginning, we were a little bit hesitant for that because when I first got here, we were, like Ms. Snowden says, we were being chewed out for parking in Heath Springs at the park and other parking areas that didn't have enough parking for soccer fields and the like and the families that were coming. So we felt very strongly that, that the gauntlet had been thrown down, that we needed as much parking as, as we could. But with further review, we're, we realize that we are a little overparked compared to other communities, and we need to adjust. We will bring that to you when we have finished that evaluation. We just have this little project called a UDO that's in the, in the, stepping ahead of that. But we will, we will bring this to the forefront as soon as we get a figure of what all the facilities that you are.
You know, like, you know, I'm just looking at that, you know.
It's a lot of parking.
It may be back near the, where the court area is, that, that could just, hopefully that might could be eliminated for the time being and just possibly be an overflow parking. And if it's not needed, that could be some other kind of facility at some time.
In the research that's been done to date, we found that other communities sometimes allow areas to be set aside as off, as, as extra parking, and it is not paved. It is treated with a subservice or permoville pavement or like a grass creek paver that is a lot less expensive, that still mimics open space and green space, but has a surface that would allow cars to park on. It would also be allowed, some people allow overflow parking in fields to count toward that.
Okay, let me ask, where, where's the playground at?
It ain't on there.
On this map.
It's in the sub-element dinner.
Splash pad is D.
You got it in the sub-element.
Yeah, but do we, do we have a regular playground?
Playground is not one of the core elements right now, but we believe that we will be, possibly be able to.
I don't, I, I'm not going to be able to park without a playground, I'm sorry.
I understand.
That...
I can tell you that in one of the communities I used to work in, that they were very successful in raising individual funds from developers in the area, and were able to collect a million dollars toward an inclusive playground that has won many awards over the state. So there's opportunities.
And just keep in mind, we're trying to address the budget and give you the core elements. I believe that we would be able to do something, it just may not be able, that would be inclusive, it may be smaller, but we don't know what bid day is going to look like, and we also have not factored in the sponsorship. So once we, so we, we understand perfectly, but we were trying to bring it in line with, with what we, what we could.
I think when Charlene writes that check for that enhanced splash pad sponsorship, you should be okay.
I will be glad to match anything my fellow council members do.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
And I just want to run, I want to run, I'm sorry, I want to run through this just real quick, just so that you can kind of see the...
Let me, before you move through that, before you move through that, let me, I've got a couple of questions. When we talking about parking, you're cutting parking. Now we do keep in mind that we planning on doing tournaments here, which you're going to have more parking spaces needed than them scheduling fields for children. To me, that, this, this tournaments is going to continue drawing in hospitality money, people eating at restaurants while they're here for tournaments. So, so we, we got to try to have some type of tournament play here.
We believe that we will, I mean, there will be parking for buses, and we, keep in mind that not everything's going to happen at the same time. So, you know, on a day-to-day basis, there will be adequate parking. And I also believe that, that Mr. Clouden and his staff will be able to actually, when there is a tournament, actually make sure that there's adequate parking.
All right, and a couple of other things here. To me, we need to be doing this for all ages. For children, small children, we need a splash pad in the playground. For the middle-aged kids, we got the ball fields and stuff that they'll be on. And adults, we need something for them. The nature trails, to me, is what they want. While they're kids, they're playing or whatever, they can walk the nature trails or whatever. To me, that gets something for everybody.
We do have a trail around the baseball fields, and the nature, the walking trails and bridges, we estimate at being about 437,000. And again, keep in mind, this is, we're, we're also looking at working with Mr. Clouden to actually have a, to work with sponsors.
That's good, and that's great. Maybe we can get some more in.
Like if we'll, we'll, we'll have another meeting probably after New Council comes on. When will, at what point will they be seeking sponsors, first of next year after groundbreaking or?
Well, she has a schedule here at the end, that we'll, we'll give you that here at the end, because when you see or agree to the schedule and timeline, then we'll show you where we're factoring that in.
Stephanie, go back to that, that map of the, right, right there. You know, listen to the discussion, you know, we're on budget with the core elements. Now, I'm, I'm saying, and I do think that we will be able to do that playground and the natural trails with the costs attached to it. And it's, as you said, it's all going to depend on the bidding process. We very well may have enough after the bidding process to do it. Even not $1.2 million is easy to raise in sponsorship. So I think it's doable with, with what we've got and the priorities that we discussed with the playground and the trails. I think to me, those are two of the top priorities that if we have the additional monies we need to do, and then work on the rest as, as time move on.
And, and the good thing is, is that we've been very clear with the project team and Wolfert that we need, we, these are the core elements, but we don't want to tear up any infrastructure. So the way that everything will be laid out will be for those subsequent, where it will be easy to place those subsequent elements.
Yeah, that relates to my question. When you talk about rough grading, that means you're going to rough grade it for the essential elements and the sub-elements?
Let me just make sure that, yes.
All right, when we, when we come back in spring or January, February, we get our next update, hopefully we'll, we'll have groundbreaking and all. I would like council to have some financial information on the hospitality tax, where we stand at that time, and how much of that fund will be used for operating expenses, because we, we don't want to, that, that, that fund has got to have a, a fund balance. But if, if there's an extra one or two million in there, maybe if we, if we don't raise, but that'll, that'll be for, it, it looks like it's an easy fix to add whatever it, when the funds become available.
Just wanted, oh, I'm sorry.
Let's say, what I'm hearing from prioritization is you have the core elements, and we're talking about the other sub-elements. And if you're saying the playground, we are saying that splash pad is a core element.
Yes.
And playground is sub-element, then trails. Because what you're also going to see here is that if there's an opportunity, but we're only going to start out with the baseball fields as one being fully synthetic. The other two, the original plan was to have all three fully synthetic. So you understand that we're going to do what we call the sprig for the other two, and then Ms. Snowden will continue. But there could be other enhancements within the core program if you wanted to. But she'll outline that.
And we'll keep, we'll keep you up to date.
Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Louise has some questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Louise, I'm sorry. Mr. Louise.
Yes, sir. They were not missed in the design component. What we received was a master, a master plan that was basically kind of based on a vision. And I believe with the 2020, they, they did use, they did look at it and did use that as a basis. But with everything else, there has been cost escalations. And then also, once they actually, we signed an agreement, I believe, this year in March, April or March, then the civil and engineers started getting involved. It wasn't so much the design and taking the input of the community. It's when they really got down to the brass tacks that they, that they actually looked at and started taking, doing, taking the science behind the vision and putting that and placing that actually in the park, that they were able to look at that. And then they did take into consideration the geotechnical. But within two years, I mean, and actually looking at the science, they saw the escalation. And I'll actually also defer to, to Andrew Pack, who can maybe state that more articulately.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think the difference was in the master plan was a projected cost. It was not a technical engineering look at a survey that we received. And so as Ms. Snowden was, was noting, we were able to do a grading plan, and that's was the, the big cost increase on the project was the infrastructure, the grading. That, that cost raised considerably. Yeah, we're in the design phase. Now, we're more in the technical phase. That earlier phase that gave that earlier number was more of a master plan phase. There was no technical engineering involved in that particular project.
Are you talking about the?
That's the purchase of the property.
Yeah, from, the purchase from Lennar, is that what you're speaking about in April of '21?
Yes, that was the purchase from the, from Lennar, Carolinas.
Year after the...
Yeah, we did, yeah, before we do a land purchase, we do the appraisal, and we do the initial geotech before we purchase. So that reflects, we did the geotech before
So that is going to deal with design, the GC fee, any general conditions, performance bond, liability insurance? No, it's every, it's, it's all of those stated.
And I do think, and make sure we highlight, Ms. Snowden, if you would, part of this design phase is also factoring in IT, because we're talking about cameras, scoreboards, other things. And have we got that in the, is that in the infrastructure?
There is, there is about $520,000 that is reflected in this current budget.
The hospitality taxes collected in all the unincorporated area in the county, correct?
What was that, Brian? I didn't hear that.
The hospitality taxes is...
Countywide, yeah.
Countywide in the unincorporated area, like the city of Lancaster has its own hospitality tax, so we don't collect it there. But we do in every, everywhere else.
Do we get a share of that, or not, do they keep?
Actually, there is a stipulate, I'm not sure if I'm thinking accommodations tax or hospitality tax, but I think the hospitality tax has some limitations of municipalities versus counties. So let me get that clarity for you.
And I don't, I don't know, Heath Springs has, or Tanne Kershaw or Van Lake has hospitality taxes.
Kershaw does.
Kershaw does?
Okay, and I'll, I'll run through the rest of this quickly. But anyway, just to recap, the core elements are the baseball fields, and there is a walking path around that. And again, as the administrator stated, the three full fields, only one of them, the one that will be used partially by USCL, will be a synthetic field for now.
All right.
And then the multipurpose fields, the soccer complex, three full fields, sprig grass, which would be Bermuda, restroom concessions, the community room, and shelter. The enhanced splash pad, restrooms, and shelter. So we worked hard not to disappoint y'all. So we did, you said that you didn't like it. So we, we buffed it up, beefed it up a little bit, so.
Appreciate that.
I want to see Charlene out there under that bucket.
I can see my, my grandchildren.
Well, she gives enough money, we can call the Charlene splash pad.
Looks more like what we want.
I have no problem with that.
And then the maintenance and storage building.
All right.
And so the next steps, construction documents, we would move to our sketch plan and, and getting our permitting and bid documents, and then construction. and, and, and getting our permitting and bid documents and then, uh, construction. And of course, um, council would also, we, we would work with you on any, uh, groundbreaking.
And to your point, Mr. Chairman, about where would the fundraising or sponsorship opportunities come in, if misnoting, I would envision that probably around March, when we have the full design elements. Um, but we could wait until, because when the bids are in, that's when we'll know. Because if we're looking to do construction in April, if we know the bids are in, then we can start adding on to that or adjusting based upon that. So I'd see that around March.
You're going to let people know the opportunity to do that?
Well, we are, actually, our fine park recreation staff have already done some groundwork on that.
I got a, I got a question on the fields. And the baseball fields, you're talking one synthetic and two sprig. Um, it, now, USCL will get money every year for their maintenance that they.
We need to do a contractual agreement with USCL for the use of the field.
Okay, now.
I can tell you from my conversations with the school district that what they pay them is, uh, not too much. So that's, that needs to be negotiated because for my understanding, it's like $6,000 a year.
No, no.
It's not, it's going to be a lot more than that.
It needs to be actual. So I think that can be negotiated.
So, uh, the synthetic field will be used for USCL?
As well as, um, um, as well as our, for our play as well.
Okay.
Be shared.
All right.
Will you show them the three fields? So it'll be the larger field. Do we have two different size fields? And so the larger field of near the F, between the A and the F would be the one, correct? Would be the synthetic larger field?
Let me ask a, a question of the rec department or, uh, you know, how we, we, if, I'll take it a second. If we do, if you do have a big soccer tournament down there, uh, do, are, are the diamonds ever used as a additional field if they would need it? Or you wouldn't put on any kind of event with?
Well, if they're, if we need to, we can. The plan, if they were synthetic turf, would be to stripe them for soccer fields to give us additional flexibility different times of the year. Um, I'm not sure if we would necessarily use it for tournament play, but it's something we could consider depending.
The, the, the one turf field will be, uh.
That, that turf field, the, the large field? No, we won't.
No, I mean, the synthetic one would be available for soccer if, if you had to.
My preference would be not to use the large synthetic field for soccer tournaments. No.
All right. No more questions.
One more question. Uh, the sprig fields, are they going to have any kind of watering system? They will? Great. Great. That'll keep them healthy.
Well, Stephanie, I love that report on budget.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
For leaving me something to sit on tonight. Thank y'all. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. All right, uh, Mr. Cato, give us an update on our county transportation road work.
And actually, a good segue to Mr. Cato and before, um, Mr. Catledge leaves, um, we do want to highlight that both projects, the detention center and the, um, park have road widening issues. We thought with SCDOT that the TIA did not call for a turn lane in front of the detention center. They have come back and said, yes, but the CTC is willing to put in money to help address that. If we need to do a turn lane on Roseland Avenue into the park, we'll probably go back to the CTC and see if they can help with that. But again, we don't know the full cost of that, but hopefully the CTC is going to help with that. Otherwise, that is a factor that we have not resolved yet with the TIA and the SCDOT. Just so you've heard that.
You're talking about turning lanes off of 521?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, into Roseland Avenue into the development because right now.
I got you.
We don't have a turn lane in how we come out.
I got you.
Um, but for the detention center on Pageland Highway, that seems to be a requirement now that wasn't a few months ago from SCDOT. So as he's managed the project and the costs, um, we've factored.
Is that negotiable with the state or are they?
We've been, we've, we thought we negotiated it the first go around and they, you were going to be okay with it, but it's since come back. Um, so we're still working on that level.
Is those going to be state roads that's?
And do I turn it into us?
This is for the detention, the detention center off of number nine.
Do we have a cost attached to that?
I'm talking about it at the park.
Anywhere.
It'll come off the Boulevard. Uh, we, we don't have to do nothing on 521.
Tell Lennar to scrape a little wider when it comes.
That would be my suggestion. Ask Lennar.
Boulevard is going to be a state, right?
Boulevard's a county road.
The Boulevard is a county road, so we've.
D O T make us put a turn lane there?
Just about how we're doing our design for the park, our own, about how do we want that entrance. So I'm just raising the, the discussion that we do have one for the requirement for the detention center.
Right.
But similar, we've had conversations about roadwork and roadway into the park off Roseland that may require.
There won't be nothing D O T mandated.
As of now, shouldn't be.
Whatever we want to do.
Exactly.
Got you.
So just, just clarification for the detention center. Uh, our requirement is not necessarily a turn lane, but widening, a road widening so that we have a turn median in the middle. So as a vehicle was turning left, uh, they could pull into the median. So, um.
It'd be like a three lane there.
Yeah, we have, we have two TIA's that said it's not going to require, there's no impact. Uh, but D O T, they've got a safety issue along all of Highway nine, D O T does. And this was their opportunity to stand their ground and say, do this. And so we have an opportunity to appeal if you'd like to do it, but, um, I, I think it wastes a lot of time.
So. And CTC has allocated funds.
They've allocated funds. I think we can make this happen.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of council, good to be here. Uh, usually this time of year, we come in as, as paving season's winding down to give you a report on all of your county administered funding, the majority of it being CTC capital sales. Uh, past few years, we either have had not to do the report due to COVID or the reports were a little disheartening due to the work delays and workforce things. But this year, thankfully, we're here to report that we've, thus far, we've had a very good paving season with some projects. Now, there are some projects that are still delayed from quite a few years back, and, and most of them are partnerships with SCDOT. So we're getting those worked out. But we'll start with, you know, the, the C fund program, which we know that's, that's the, that's the gasoline tax. And we're self-administered. You have a transportation committee. And before we go into that, just to state, as we all know, that is one of the better committees of the state. They do an excellent, excellent job to be aboard of volunteers. So just to report in on that, the 2021, and I won't go through every road because we've kept running a list of this in your weekly communicator, uh, during this paving season. So the 2021 CTC resurfacing roads, again, they all have a 2025 completion date. Those are some of the ones that are on delay because those roads there, I believe, were going to be mixed by the D O T and resurfaced by the CTC. So, uh, D O T had some problems with their in-house crew, workforce, cement supply, this, that, and the other. So that one's kind of on hold with some completion dates of next year. We did get the section of Steel Hill Road from Highway five to Van White completed, as well as Winterwood Road, which is in the southern part of the county. And then this is the big one we were working on. This was some one-time money from 2022, and we were able to work on, as you see, some are completed. When we have paved by them, that means they're pretty much completed. Still going to have to go back and do some, some shoulder work and things of that nature on, on those roads. And, you know, some of those highlights, Bill Thompson Courtside, Unity Church, those were state roads, uh, secondaries that your transportation committee selected because they were so far down on, on a regular D O T resurfacing list. So it's, it's good to have that flexibility to catch up on those roads. And again, that's about a $6 million contract. Then CTC also approved in 2023 a full depth patching program, uh, contract that we had never had before. We, we did what we could, where we could with our general fund budget. Uh, that money was spent very, very quickly. I think it was all spent last fall. So it was $450,000. It was on budget and it currently is completed. And then we have 2022 county roads, again, CTC funded. Those got worked in. And like I said, there's paved beside most of them, which means that project's almost completed with some dress up, some striping, things of that nature. Uh, the calcium chloride roads, which we, we really benefit from, from CTC, that's for our non-paved roads. Basically, a lot of the complaints on those, and we have a lot of folks that live on non-paved roads that may not even want their road paved. They like their dirt road, but they don't like the dust. So this calcium, uh, treatment, typically we apply it in May and November, but since COVID, we've only really been able to order and get the calcium. So we've only supplied it once a year. So we try to do that in around July, just to keep the dust down. Uh, the 2023 resurfacing roads, that was two roads, again, a partnership with D O T where they did the base work, the reclamation, and CTC did the resurfacing. Those roads are actually completed. So that was about 1.8 million dollars. And again, the 2024, uh, selections, and this was another good, like I said, we're always looking at alternatives and partnerships, this, that, and the other. With the cement crews being so backed up and behind and overprogrammed, we entered into some, a few roads that were, you know, secondary roads, a lot of residents live on them, been asking to have their road paved. So what we did is we entered a partnership with the local D O T here where they were able to go out and what we call level the roads. So they go out and put a leveling course down. It's not pretty, but it, it beefs up, takes all the ruts out of the contours. And then CTC administered a paving contract to pave over that. So those four roads there and the two that are completed, Dudley Steel and Woodside Road, really turned out very well. So we're pleased with that. We're going to continue to explore that partnership that working with the SCDOT. And we have some one-time money for, for this year that was just recently approved. And again, the D O T is going to level, we're going to get back into that partnership. They're going to level and pave about 10 roads, uh, listed there. And then the CTC is going to come in and we'll resurface those roads. So that's about a 1.2 million dollars out of the additional 6 million they got, that they're going to use. And as Mr. Marstall discussed, we did discuss at a couple, their last meeting about the situation with the turn lane at the detention center. They were on board and have programmed a not to exceed amount of $300,000, which should take care of the safety or widening criteria on Highway nine there with the D O T. So CTC will administer that, that project as well. Uh, the Firethorn Roads, again, a, basically a subdivision, a little too far along to do preservation or patching in. So again, we, we, Lancaster County Public Works, we partnered with the CTC on this. We took our amount that we would have used in preservation, but we didn't want to preserve those roads because they probably wouldn't have lasted. So we partnered with the CTC. They paid for the reclamation and, uh, cement stabilization and the, uh, the county preservation funds we used to do the paving on it. Uh, they also approved another half million dollars for some full depth patching that we hope to, we have it procured and awarded. Probably spend our winter months doing some patching in some necessary areas. And on our county roads, there, that's a pretty big need, not just in the winter, but the all times of the year. So that's a, that's, that's a good tool there to have to be able to utilize funding for that. Uh, CTC also approved $750,000 for some surface treatment. Again, that's a step up, and we'll discuss that a little bit. We've discussed it before. We know the issue with a lot of our substandard roads. They lack right of way. We do a prescribed easement of ditch to ditch. Some of these roads are only 14, 15 feet wide. So an option there is to apply a surface treatment, which is a, you know, more impermeable surface than, than stone, pretty tight. They've made a lot of advances in the surface treatment. If, uh, you're like me and old school, it's called tar and gravel. So that's, we have a program for that now for some of our county dirt roads that we can't really seem to get right of way on or improve them to a full-blown county road standard route. Again, some more one-time money is to reclaim and resurface final, uh, two roads. The, it looks like Steel Hill, once we did, the CTC did the part from five to there, there's a little section, I believe it's from Van White to Old Hickory. That section there, they've been left off for years. So they going to go in there and button that up. So Steel Hill Road from Highway five all the way out to 521 should be in good condition, working on. That's a highlight of that. And, uh, some other roads there on that, that's about a 2.5 million dollar contract. So in, in total, their whole projects, the past few years with the extra funding was 17,894,894. I love how that number came out. And again, just some pictures of that. Again, that's the finished product of Courtside Road. And then there's Dudley Steel where you could see we just leveled and paved that, but it's, it's turned out to be a good product. And that's pretty much all for the CTC. Our, our next, uh, category of funding that we're, we're very, very pleased with, it's, it's, it's relatively new for us. And again, when council approved raising the road fee five extra dollars, that extra $5 amount is allocated for what we call a pavement preservation. And we've been able to do a lot with that. Uh, in fact, we've been able to do a couple of really bad parking lots. This one out here at the county building, Walnut Creek and the DSS lot, uh, there, Walnut Creek is complete, but the other two will probably have to push over into the spring because time's getting late to, to pave a parking lot. But that's ongoing, estimated at about $900,000. And then the pavement preservation, uh, like I said, we've tweaked the design on that since we first started. We're very pleased with what we have now. We think it's a more durable product than just the preventive maintenance mix. We're not, we weren't fond of that. So we've gotten Arlington and Clermont, uh, Ashley Glen and Highland Creek. Ashley Glen is still waiting. Highland Creek is completed. Shallow North and Whitehall, uh, again, on preservation isn't just for pavement. We consider some of that surface treatment like a reapplication to a road that's already surface treated. And Benson Road and Farthing Road are, are candidates. We use that on. And then, like I said, Walnut Creek, we have a lot of miscellaneous finish patching to do in there. And that has about a 1.8 million dollar price tag to it. And it's, it's near completion, but not quite complete yet. And projects we've completed with the pavement preservation, Laurel Silver Run, Millstone Creek, and then the Sun City wasn't a preservation, but that's where the bulk of the, of finished patching went with the 450. And we used some of the road fee money to, to get that done in there as well. And again, that, that pretty much budgeted out to about $3 million. Again, here's some pictures of that. That, uh, Clermont subdivision, and then there's Farthing Drive on the re, re-treatment of the surface treatment. Again, you can see that the road's very, very narrow. Without the right of way, we would never consider paving it, which would turn into quite an, uh, expensive project as well, just on a, uh, kind of a rural road like that. So it's, it seems to be working out well. Then go back a few years before that, we had about $26 million programmed in capital sales two for roadway work. And then this is the list down. And again, those, those were completed late last year. Like I said, this was about seven years ago. So these projects were all completed. Henry Harris Road, uh, resurfacing was probably the highest priority at the time when the ballot went out. But we got a lot of roads done with that, all, uh, countywide. Some of them we were able to complete like the Arrow would. We were able to get a lot of roads in there under one contract. So that worked out pretty good. And again, that was $26 million. And just kind of to touch on what was discussed about some of the other projects, capital sales two, all the way up to about 2020 or so, when it was cranking out and going well, we were doing roads for probably around $450,000 a mile. Now, what we're looking forward to with capital sales three, CTC moving forward in 2024, and hopefully some more funding source coming down the pike. You're looking, we're, we're concepting that in at about $650,000. So, you know, you can relate it all to COVID or the supply, demand release, but that's a, a big increase in roadway work. So I kind of see where the increases are coming from there. But again, capital sales two, done, fully completed, came in on, at the budget, right at the budget target mark there. And because of that, we had, as, as council's well aware, we had a sales tax proviso for extra funding from capital sales two, which we selected most roads that were on capital sales three, which had passed by that time, and added a few other problem roads that weren't on capital sales three. But this was a way to, to get some, uh, some more much needed work done to these roads. Uh, this capital sales two has got a 2026 completion date for all of it, but it is all completed now with the exception of Walnut Creek Parkway, uh, Rise Lane and Cleveland Street. And then. And then there was some stuff in there about the Catawba Ridge Boulevard, which hasn't been built yet.
Is Regent Parkway complete then?
Regent Parkway, we'll talk about that in just a second. The paving part is complete, but as we got to studying Regent Parkway, there's more going on up there as well. We're all aware of Regent Parkway, but we're studying some safety issues up there, some guard rail, you know, to help the homes that live adjacent to Regent Parkway. We're also looking at, it's back to pre COVID levels now where your peak hours, they're backed up from the Harrisburg Light all the way back to the bridge going into York County now. So we're looking at the traffic, doing some studies there. And because it's also still on capital sales three, we're hoping we can have funding from three to continue to fund improvements to Regent Park.
Well, on on Regent, you talked about the guard rails. Is that something that's already funded? Is your money falling guard?
There's money in capital sales three, yes. We've spent the money, the budget in the proviso, which was capital sales two, but Regent Parkway is was also on capital sales three.
But Regent Parkway is one of the major reasons that that we that we were supporting capital sales tax to proviso.
Is there a schedule to go ahead and finish that?
There is. We're working on a schedule. Obviously, the next phase, we're looking at the safety aspect, and that's going to be some guard rail and some pavement markings. We're working on design work for that. We're also looking at at one of the smaller roads there. The guard rail really probably needs to cross that road. So we're working with legal on that, at what to do about possibly not not full blown closing and abandoning the road, but allowing no access onto that road and have that guard rail extend. But we're working on that. And then for the, I guess you could call this project kind of phased, the last phase would be looking at how to get that traffic flow going a little better. We're thinking about possibly a roundabout there at Gilroy Drive and Regent Parkway to kind of keep the traffic flowing there. But Regent Parkway, when we took it and we all knew about it and we got it put, you know, like I said, it moved up as the highest priority for the proviso, it was in terrible shape. Now it's not in terrible shape. It's paved, it's fixed, but you have these other issues tied to it that we're looking at and hopefully can use some funding from three on that. But we'll have more reporting on that for you as it comes in. But we are working, right now, the priority is the safety program. And then the two, the two on that, that Cleveland Street's a DOT road, we know a lot about that down in Kershaw. That was their highest priority when we talked to them about capital sales three. And council chose to put it on the proviso, but a lot of engineering and and utility relocation, dealing with the railroad on that particular road, plus it's the main road, all the soybean trucks park on there in Kershaw. And that one's still under design. We almost have it ready to bid, but it has it has been and it will continue to be a monster. The other one on there that was not on, had a little bit of history to it, is Rise Lane, which is a dead end road up in the Panhandle area. It had some newer development on it as like a minor subdivision back in 2017. And again, Rise Lane pavement on it isn't bad at all. The only problem is that it's only 12 feet wide. Now you got 15 or 16 homes on it. And the goal was going in, we thought we could just channel widen and repave the road and widen it, but not necessarily the case because it turned into the same thing as Cleveland Street. We found out half the road or 300 feet of the road belongs to the DOT, had to work with them with an encroachment process. Water line's running under the existing pavement, so we're going to have to move that out of the way. We've got some power poles, driveways, and some clearing to do. So that has turned into one of our more challenging projects. Again, it is almost ready for the bid packages as well to be bid and let. And then that one will be complete and your your proviso will be completed. We plan to be on target with the $9 million, but that's only because of the roads we started first. We had a lot of savings. When we hit the Regent Parkways, the Rise Lanes and the Cleveland Streets, and again, we haven't even bid those yet, we haven't hit savings. Those are going to be much more expensive than what was estimated back in 2019 for this. And then there's some pictures of it. That's that's your issues with Cleveland Street. Rise Lane, I love that, looks more like a walking trail, but that is a county maintained road with, you know, over a dozen homes on it, some of them newer homes that were built recently. So again, and that just goes into when we talk about it and we have these discussions about county roads and the substandardness of some of them and improving them, we work with development services on, this is the stuff that the your developments and stuff will be wanting to tie into once all the road frontage from your your main DOT roads that have right of way this, that, and the other. You're going to see this a lot, not just in the Panhandle. We've had some cases come to TRC where someone wanted to do a little small subdivision down around the Elgin area off a county gravel road. County road can't support, it was 27 lots or so, couldn't support that. So we wanted to get the developer to widen the road for us, and that's something we're working on with Ms. Harden's staff for the new UDO. That's just, that's just bad for business. And again, we won't really, we won't really pave a road like that unless it's upgraded. So that's something that we have a challenge that we're going to look forward to on that. Then, of course, capital sales three just started. We have that, that, those lists of roads are under contract and should be starting sometime next year. And then we have some that have already started. We were, we have started in Legacy Park. We almost have that funding spent out for there. Commerce Alley in Kershaw is probably going to be postponed over to the spring and have that completed. And then the remaining roads that are currently not under contract are listed there. Andrew Vincent was a selection on the capital sales three ballot. As we know, that's also part of the skip grant to have a culvert replacement with a bridge. And actually, under the emergency from the last storm, that's the one county road that still remains closed because of the blowout of the culvert. We've ordered a replacement culvert, and then when the skip program and the grant comes through, they'll replace that with a bridge. So hopefully the timing all hits good and we'll use the capital sales three. Probably not going to pave that road, but at least get it surface treated and improved. And then with highway safety, there's also the Highway five Riverside Road West rebound intersection. Capital Sales Three has programmed $1,350,000 for that for that intersection, which more than likely is almost completed with design. That's probably going to be your first signal on Highway five. That's where it's going. Capital Sales Three has $1.35 million invested in it, and we're working with the COG and the DOT to program that money, and they'll manage that, but the sales tax funding will be used for it. And that's a total of about $7 million. And again, we were allotted in sales tax three, I think, 13 million. So we're still going to have some, but we have a, all the alternate roads are DOT roads. And also too, with the with having extra funding left over, Regent Parkway was, you know, one of our highest priorities. So we will be looking at a later date to come back and discuss continuing using capital sales three to complete Regent Parkway.
They better make sure that everybody knows there's a traffic light at five and Riverside Road.
I know it. Well, that's, they don't know if that's going to be it or not. There is an intersection improvement plan there. The last discussions we've had with them is that's looking like it's going to be signalized.
When's that going to happen?
If it's still in a design phase, you're looking at probably 2027.
Let me tell you, it's going to happen soon.
Yeah, maybe it will. I'm just, I'm just trying to be real here. And again, here's some of the pictures. Again, these are the roads. Now, the Providence subdivision was in the proviso, but these are some of your capital sales three candidates, Antioch Circle and then Rosewood Circle, which is, I believe, in the city limits of Lancaster. That was one of their requests. And again, the total from all this funds coming out, around $63 million. And again, the chunk of it was capital sales two, the 26 million, which we came in, you know, right at the budget on that, the road fee, everything's coming in funding. Everything else, prices are going up. Like I said, we're, we're estimating now, as we were pre COVID, we were estimating about $350, $450,000 a mile. Now we're, we're automatically just plugging in almost $650,000 a mile. It's gone up a good bit out there, and a lot of the work that we're planning now is going to have more to do with widening, turn lanes, roundabouts. These things are not only expensive, but they take a while in design and right away in utility phases. Just because we say, okay, we got a roundabout under contract, that still could be two to three years until completion date. That's just how, that's just how it is. Any questions?
No, we, we, we thank y'all for what you're doing. And would you like to introduce your fine road crew back there? I know.
Yes, I would, actually.
If anybody does not know, would you please introduce?
I sure will. And we're very, we're proud of everyone involved in it. Like I said, we, we want to thank the delegation for raising the gas tax and providing the funding. We want to thank council for the support with the road fee and everything else. Our municipalities, we work well with, as well as DOT on a local and district level. But again, all these funds are administered by the county. So the hub of it is going to be us. And with us, one of our consulting partners is Mr. Brian Falkenberry from ICE Engineering. He's really, really, he's got a lot of experience with DOT, and he's just been an asset since he's came on board. And our road maintenance director is Mr. John Robinson. So those, those are usually the guys that we send out in the field to take care of these things that that happen. We just, we put it all together and manage it as best we can, but they do an excellent job.
We thank y'all for what y'all do.
And Mr. Chairman, can I piggyback on that? Mr. Cato, thank you. If you've heard the many calls he's gotten over time, I know Clermont neighborhood and others, certainly Regent Park, I know the emails and different things that he gets. So clearly hats off to you, Jeff, and moving all this forward, and certainly to John. I even got a email the other day from Red Ventures, some work that we did in their area that they're very pleased with the quality and speed at which it was done.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our review, Chapter Four, rewrite the UDO, Ms. Allison Hart.
Well, I want to make a comment before we get started. I don't want nobody to take anything personally, but after this last little deal that we had, which I had more calls on this than I did in the 12 years I've been on here, if I could get four votes next year when this thing goes through, that book will be about half that thick because I'm planning on requesting a lot of this stuff to go away. So that's just, I'm just one vote. Ms. McGriff told me that, but I will be soliciting three more.
Did I even start?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because we can skip the whole thing if you'd like. Okay, to give you an overview of where we've been and where we're going, the rewrite is based on the UDO assessment that was done in previous years. Work coincided with a comprehensive plan update in the last 18 months. You had many discussions in 2023 concerning chapters one, two, and three, the uses, the density, and the district regulations. From May to November 2023, we went back and forth on the MDR and cluster subdivision overlay district amendments and had no results on that. The Cal meeting in September 23 talked about mixed use development options, and you determined that PDD was to be added back in, which we are in the process of adding as well. We had comp plan meetings from January through April of 2024 and got the comp plan approved. March 2024, we started back since we couldn't get together on the MDR and the cluster. We went into the other chapters. We started with Chapter 10 in March, Chapter nine in June, Chapter seven in July and August, Chapter six in September, and talking today about Chapter four. Work continues on Chapters two and three. We talked, we had a lot of discussion during the comprehensive planning time as well as before this, that the original, that there was an interest in having different zones in different parts of the county. So that the zoning that would be in the south, the southern part of the county might not be the same as what would be in Indian land because of the different interest in that area. So we're working on splitting out the LDR and the MDR into rural, central, and suburban areas. The chart on the screen shows you that there will be some that will be available in Region one of Indian land, Region two of Lancaster, and Region three of the south of the county, but some of them will not be. For instance, we will not put the same kind of zoning code in Indian land that we would put down outside of Kershaw in some of the more rural areas because it is not the same kind of community, not the same kind of fit, not the same kind of density need. It would be available to move forward in the future if density suddenly became an issue in the area, but it would not be on our list as staff to give that to you. Also, a multifamily zone and then an urban village zone, which is high density with strict design standards. That's the kind of thing that gets you a Baxter Village. The Chapter Four overview, this is the open space landscaping riparian buffers and tree preservation section. We divided into those focus areas. Single family homes and duplexes that are constructed on preexisting lots are exempt from landscaping regulations. All other uses would have regulations that apply. And when we say it's exempt from single family lots, what we mean is if the lot is already existing in a subdivision somewhere, and then the subdivision would have already met landscaping requirements, you don't need to go further into a single family house. Or if you happen to have a large tract of property and you have one acre parceled out for your child, didn't build their house there, they wouldn't have to go through and do an extensive buffer or anything like that. But subdivisions in general, larger subdivisions, ones that meet the major subdivision rules, those neighborhoods, those would have to have the landscaping. So to give you more of a breakdown, the landscaping, many of the buffer requirements are increased. We increase the parking lot screening and plantings per your request. It provides low density options for parking lot landscaping, carries the highway corridor overlay district requirement for pedestrian walkways into all large parking lots. Right now, the highway corridor overlay requires that if you have a parking lot in that area, you have to provide a pedestrian walkway from the store up to the neighboring sidewalks. We'll move that through to the larger commercial uses and other zones. The drive-throughs would also have to have the HCO standards, which includes the the knee wall, the little brick wall that that separates it from the roadway. The streetscape buffer has been increased to 40 feet along the highway corridor overlay to allow for future widening. Yes, sir.
Is that on collector roads?
Collector roads? Which one?
Streetscape buffer on, is that on all roads?
No, that's on the highway corridor overlay, so that'll be on 521 and 160.
Okay, just, okay.
Yeah. And then all other commercial districts have the buffer increased to 20 feet. For riparian buffers, those are buffers along the waterway. We change the criteria for water courses for the current drainage area to standards based on the US Geological Survey stream classifications, and most standards are now streamlined to meet the USGS standards as well. Tree protection, we replaced incentive based approach with a new mandatory tree save. It creates tree preservation standards. It requires a tree survey to identify tree save areas for those that it applies to. Agricultural uses and timber properties are exempt. And then there are land that has been timbered must wait one to five years before applying for a subdivision. Apparently, in the past, we've had developers that will go through and and use the timbering or silviculture permits to take out all the trees and then come right back in with a subdivision plan for the property so that they don't have to go through the grading or the the tree removal penalties. So the new one addresses that by saying you have to wait a year to apply for a subdivision. If you do it with all the permits in place, you have to wait five years if you do it without going through the county permit process.
Penalty for violating that?
Yes.
What is the penalty?
The penalty for violating that? We're still discussing that. Right now, the penalty is you don't get to build on it.
Well, the penalty would be you wouldn't be able to get a permit.
You wouldn't be able to apply or get a permit for the subdivision.
Forever?
For five years.
I know. Well, I'm thinking about the 300 acres on Riverside Road that got cleared.
And then for open space, it redefines open space. We have, we often have discussions about what open space is or is not. It's, it's actually a big discussion in planning world. It provides basic connectivity and accessibility standards with accessibility being required for all open space. So that goes into the equity and justice parts of acts of open space. And then it types them as natural area, park, greenway, playground, active recreation area, squares or greens, pocket parks, and community gardens, and gives requirements for those.
So is open space going to be something other than non buildable land?
Yes. Open space does not, the floodplains don't count as open space, water courses don't count as open space for those requirements. as open space for those requirements.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, there's, there's one more district that will allow residential that has been talking about, which is a mixed-use, a PDD.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be presented to council?
Yes, sir.
It will in, in November, okay. All right.
PDD is, since you write it, or the developer writes it and negotiates it directly with you, what we will include in the PDD ordinance, or the, the section in the code, will be the outline of what we are looking for when you apply for a PDD. There may be additional requirements that are in there, specific goals for the public gain that's the offset for the PDD, but it won't have as much, it won't have things like setbacks and the like.
Because I, I'm requesting this, because if you look at the shallow unity area there for about a mile above, you know, all the way to the sewer, there's three or four large tracks, plus you've got the, the 140 acres that the Norman's property, which will be a, hopefully a mixed-use, mainly a commercial area right there, that, that we, it doesn't need to be all residential. I think we've learned enough about PDDs where we won't.
We can make better choices.
Make them where they don't turn into all townhomes or whatever.
Yeah, and they also should have a sunset clause on them. Most of, most of them run too, run forever.
If y'all will ever propose a 75-year sunset on any more of those in the future, I will walk. Just so you know, if you want me to quit, that is the way to ha, make it happen.
One, one issue that, on the PDDs, is if we have PDD 201, 2025, is it locked in on that current UDO, or can you change, like?
It doesn't have to be.
Issues with, they can put in roads from 1999 standards. Can, can that be, like, negotiations like?
Absolutely.
Be changed to, to?
Absolutely. And it, in the PDD.
That has been made.
Over and over again, it's been made.
Yeah, it could.
The PDD changes what rules they want to change, and then everything else falls to the underlying zoning, or the zoning before the PDD and to the underlying UDO at the time, unless it says otherwise. And we would argue that we don't want any of them more to, to be locked in with a code that may be changing for time.
But to be fair to, like a developer, you could say, hey, you got five years under the current UDO in 2030. If you're not finished, you go, you're, you're subject to the new, I mean, stuff like, I mean.
To be fair to the developer, they're writing it. So let them write what they want in there, and everything else they can't think of at the time falls to the underlying zoning, and then we know that it's equitable and equal across the board.
I know there's been a lot of mistakes.
I, I used to manage 33 of these PUDs, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, Director Harden, can you back up a slide? I think maybe the first one you started out. So I want to check in with county council. I don't know if you feel like you've gone through since January, March, five chapters, if you feel like you have a grasp on them to move this forward, because the plan now going forward is we will have the UDO consultants here at the November Cal.
I, I think so, and I think when New Council comes on, go ahead and, you know, we need to, since we are going to have two New Council members, you, you're going to pretty much have to have workshop and go through it page by page.
Agreed.
And I, I would like to thank Ms. Harden. She was put in a very difficult situation like we were the other night, and I, I hope council wasn't too hard, and you did a great job.
Thank you.
And we had a, we had a hundred and something constituents that were happy when they left, and we appreciate what y'all, y'all did, because sometimes it can be difficult.
I will tell you that I'm very happy.
But you're referencing two New Council members, so whether I understand or not doesn't really matter anymore, because I won't vote on it.
The, if, if, I'm very happy to take unnecessary rules out of the book, but every once in a while, yeah, every once in a while, I'm going to stand on it and say, this is what we really need, and I will give you all the reasons for it, and then I've given you my best judgment.
Well, just, just say on, on, on chicken coops.
Yeah.
To me, most of them in rural areas, hey, you can have so many chickens per acre or whatever, gotta be 10 feet from the property line, 50 feet from the neighbor's house, and you got to take care of your smell.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and, and just take out, take out, I think we get too deep sometimes, so.
I understand.
Okay.
Wait, one more, one more question. So November, we're going to have the consultants here. They're going to meet with the planning commission for part of the day, meet with you all for, basically, the Cal meeting is going to be UDO and the consultants. We gave you at your dais some of the last two iterations related to the MDR cluster kind of conversation. Do you want things to react to at the Cal meeting? Meaning, when we have, if you get one more slide, Ms. Harden, when you have the different areas of the county that are broken up, and if we say some zoning will be in some of these areas and not in others, do you want to have conversations about setbacks, square footage, other requirements based upon each of those areas?
I, I would rather them go ahead and, and put some numbers in, you know, because they're, 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 they'll be the qualified experts, and there probably might be some requests to tweak some of them.
Yeah, but are they, are they going to put those numbers in with the division, like north of 5 and southern there, and then?
Well, that's what, that's what this is. So when you talk about north of 5, we do need to be clear if, if that is the actual zone the comprehensive plan is referring, we got to give you those cutoffs, because we do have it from the three zones that you've talked about. But where that line is specifically, if it's 5, I'm not sure, it probably is, but I'm not sure. But we've taken what your input was, look at the county by zones, and maybe have some different standards in each of those areas. So we're to this point now where we're going to give you that, but do you see, like, LDR would be allowed only, what is it saying? Residential zones in South County, top line?
LDR rural, LDR central, and LDR suburban.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be allowed in the northern part of the county, but if you see it there, LDR rural, do you want to see that have some different lot sizes, setbacks, requirements, different things?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I don't know about the rest.
Well, I would.
That's the idea, is that with the?
I won't be here in November.
Oh, that's right.
So.
But we'll have it for you to react to.
Okay.
So is it, Ms. Harden, do you have clarity for consultants?
Stick numbers in grid, put it on the screen, got it.
You know, I'm getting, I've just got a text from somebody who wants to know if I live in the Panhandle.
No.
Panhandle's regarded as north of 5, is that right?
We got one more topic, so thank you all for, for thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. Ms. Snowden, give us a quick update on the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, please, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As you all know, we're getting close to where we have to have all of our funds expended, so just want to just give you a list of the completed projects. And so there are about 33 completed projects. Any questions? But a total of 12 point, I mean, I'm sorry, 12.5 million has been expended, committed.
And we just closed on the, the county is now the owner of a facility for the fire and rescue.
Storage facility, the second one there, and we did the elections fleet as well.
Where is it?
Um, one, I'm trying to think the address, Linwood Drive.
It's a real nice building.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll get the address, I can't think of the address.
Is that the one that done, sold one time before we could look at?
Yes, it did about a year, yep, that's the one we originally wanted, and we actually ended up getting it a year later.
And it's got a secondary building on it. So, I mean, it's, it's got finished in, it's a modern building. I think it's a great facility.
It's got a ramp too, or, or a loading dock or something too.
So just wanted to give you, the summary point is between the last, there were, there have, has been a lot of activity to include, we're now in the bid evaluations for the coroner's office, so that moved very quickly. So on Friday, the valuation, internal evaluation team will be looking at that bid. The EMS Bay project, which was stalled, that's moving forward. We have grading happening out there, and, and we should have the pad up, I believe, in the next week or two.
With a new contractor.
With a new contractor, so.
Hallelujah.
So good news. So we're moving forward. So the bottom line is, is that we should have the entirety of our, we will have the 19 million in total committed, but one of the things that I do want to point out is, is that we know that the coroner's office is going to be more than 2.5 million. So, so we are going to have to probably, we know that we're going to have to come forward with you once we actually finalize the bids, and we'll bring that to you probably at the next Cal meeting, so that you'll know. And the sheriff's storage facility, ARPA contingency funds, we had 500,000 that was designated just in contingency, but we know that we're going to have to address FFNE shelving and lifts, for whatever reason, we're not part of the original bid.
Estimate, estimate?
Or estimate, I'm sorry.
And to that point, if you'll back up one slide, please, Ms. Snowden. So these are really the, kind of the outstanding projects that will take us up to the 19 million, but as she was just hiding, highlighting, if you have down there in the fifth line about the building expansion for the coroner, where we have the 2.7 million identified from ARPA funds, I've said it before, and I want to say it again, that we probably will need to use general fund funds to complete that, because we're going to exhaust our ARPA funds. Same thing with the sheriff's evidence, storage building, the fourth line on there, we've got 1.4 million. We've already talked about the FFNE with the lifts and storage, yeah, shelving, but the bid still may come in higher than that. And so if you're comfortable understanding that you've got options, say, for instance, all these projects, the HQ Bay, we're actually feeling pretty good about that now, but if some of these come in over, your option could be to fund more for the coroner, but potentially not go forward with the sheriff's evidence storage and put all the ARPA money to all the other projects. Or if we see that you might put general fund dollars to several projects. So there, there's a choice here that we're going to have to make soon. Do you split the ARPA money among these remaining six or seven projects? Or do you pull out a project, so you're not having to commit general fund dollars to one or two to make them whole? So I just want to know, some way along the line here, we may be, if we go forward with all these projects, we could have up to a million dollars in general fund needs to complete these projects.
And that includes the contingencies?
Yeah, I mean, we do identify on there what's, contingency amount is 540, so it's still that being utilized, but I'm still saying to, to close out all these projects without starting the evidence storage, or without starting the coroner's, that we will need general fund dollars to complete these projects.
The, the, the financial situation of the county that was presented to us the other night, I don't think a million dollars will be an issue, because we had a $75 million in estate investment pool that, over a year, I think, has created 4.3 million. And I would, we, we've, we've come this far, and I'm sure not going to tell the coroner or the sheriff that we're not going to complete these projects.
I, I think we'll be good, but I'm just glad to, to see that we're going to spend all of our 19 million dollars on the ARPA funding. That's what I was afraid, that we would not meet that threshold. I'm good, and I think we can afford in our budget any overage from that, hopefully.
Ms. McGriff?
We, we, we spent it well on infrastructure. I think that's, that's, that's the best thing, you've got something to show for it.
Council, we've been bird-dogging this. I mean, right now, as we speak, last week, the coroner's, I mean, the sheriff's evidence storage facility is out to bid, so we're, we're moving it, so thank you all.
We, we know, like on the coroner, you know, I, I can just think, when you get to the soft cost, the grading cost, only even a small project would be over a million dollars, I feel sure.
It's going to be an 8,500 square foot facility that includes a Sally Port.
Water requirements and grading and all, so.
But again, hats off to Deputy Administrator and the procurement team, our, our project managers. We are pleased to announce that we do have a new project manager coming on board in two weeks.
November the 4th, and has experience standing up the hospital in Afghanistan and working for, work, taking care of a 300-acre facility, and is currently working with LLR, so.
State agency, so that will help us get these projects across the finish line in the next two years.
Appreciate what you're doing too.
Thank you.
All right, anything we need to worry about a calendar?
I just say calendar, talking about the detention center and potential groundbreaking. We are initially looking at Thursday, November 7th. Mr. Graham, are you in town? You're not in town.
No, I will not be in town that whole week.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's the week before the 12th.
Oh, that's right, I may be in town then. I'm glad my social secretary's keeping up with me.
I would just say about the calendar, number one, you will take a vote on approving this at the November 12th meeting, so if you have anything that you don't like about the calendar or the holiday schedule, please look over it, make sure, and I would like to point out that the two retreat dates that we have set for the calendar are January 29th and February 4th, so if you will, please look at your calendars, and if you have obvious already problems with that, please let us know, so that we can reset those dates before we publish this calendar.
So where will that retreat be located?
TBD, within the county.
I thought maybe we could go to Florida.
I'm not going to schedule anything out of county.
Put it in the paper, let's see what happens.
But, Mr. Chairman?
I'm not going, I'm staying in Lancaster County.
And that's where I will schedule.
Hopefully in a county facility.
Yes, exactly. But November 7th, does that work generally, 10 a.m.? We're going to coordinate with the sheriff and then the, the construction crew, but that's where we're.
On the, on the calendar is, I mean, is it good for the holidays and everything, everybody, everything set, and y'all happy, or?
We still have one more board and commission to hear from, but everybody else has confirmed the dates, and.
So around the holidays and all, they work out like they need to?
We've moved meetings around holidays, we, yes.
I mean, okay, but for the county holidays and all, they're all set.
Observed holidays for Christmas and New Year's, yeah, that's all factored into the adopted schedule.
All right. Hey, it's 6:10, it's time for a motion to adjourn, please. Mr. Mosteller makes a motion to adjourn. Mr. Corns, would you second, Mr. Corns second, roll call, please.
Jerry Graham.
Adjourn.
Charlie McGriff.
Approve.
Billy Mosteller.
Approve.
Jose Luis. Steve Harper.
Approve.
Brian Corns.
Approved.
Uh, we have unanimous vote to adjourn, this meeting is adjourned. Yeah, 6 o'clock. You gave me the dread 4:13.